Polly.
Can hear that, by the way.
Just a couple more minutes. We'll get started right at six o'clock. All right, we will go ahead and get started. The Monday, April 27, 2020, meeting of the Market City Commission Call to Order at 16:00 p.m. Please join me for the pledge. I plead allegiance to the plan.
I am the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk's roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Bonzal.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Here. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Commissioners, we do have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Would we have a second? Mr. Stonehouse?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to announcements. I don't have any announcements this evening on the week. Public comment. Just to note that with this Zoom meeting, I do have Sean Havens at the City Commissioner's Office helping me managing the public comments via video and phone this evening, and we do have some folks in the waiting room. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making public comments. Also, please note, commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comments. Our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting during commissioner comments. Do we have anyone for public comments? Yes, please. If we could please have city clerk read any written statements. How many do we have this evening?
I have four, and they don't, they don't stipulate whether they should be the first or the second comment. I can read them all right now and just get that done what he'd like.
Yeah, let's go ahead and read those four comments. Thank you, city clerk.
Sure. So, just going alphabetical, starting this comment is from John Broms at 410 North Sixth Street in Marquette. Honorable Mayor Smith, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Hill, City Commissioners, I would like to encourage the City Commission to direct the city clerk's office to implement a universal permanent absentee ballot mailing list. By adding all voters to the existing mailing list, every voter would get an application in the mail before every election. If in-person voting remains in place, the voter can choose either to vote in person or by mail. If the COVID-19 situation persists through Election Day, the mailing list will already be in place. The results would likely increase voter participation and additional postage costs would likely be balanced by having fewer precinct workers needed on Election Day. Respectfully, John Broms. The second comment is from Matthew Dawson, 1007 West Bluff Street. After reviewing the proposal, I have the following comments. Verizon states the site of the new tower on the PTA properties meets the needs of Verizon Wireless and has the least amount of impact to the surrounding area. I say my family certainly qualifies for living in the surrounding area, and we are convinced that if this land use permit is granted, it would create a major impact on our lives and the entire neighborhood. Additionally, Verizon will be allowed to add an additional 20 feet onto the tower without community consent. A 40-foot tower now becomes a 60-foot tower. Verizon states when a new tower is considered, the design of the tower is done to provide additional co-location possibilities. There are no co-location options available for this site. I say no co-location possibilities. Where's the proof? In whose determination? If built, Verizon stated they would co-locate at this site in the future. Verizon states a stamped letter has been submitted with the application from a licensed engineer stating that the tower is designed for two carriers. I say where does this stop? Who monitors how many additional services would be added to carriers providing how many services? Two carriers are too too many. Verizon wants to foot the door, and who knows what lies on the horizon? Verizon states the closest tower to this location is the pine tree monopole south of this location in the golf course. It is too far to the south to feasibly meet Verizon's need for the business area that this tower would provide. I say the tower south of this location and the golf course is not even listed on the site map Verizon provided. I can see it from our house. Even without this tower included, there are four other towers within 1 to 1.37 miles from the proposed location. Verizon states another potential site is identified in the future. Once another potential site is identified in the future, a site acquisition agent will always look for, first for an existing site that could serve the needs, whether it's an existing tower of a building that could support antennas and equipment. I say if Verizon is able to identify another potential future site, then I am certain Verizon can find an alternate location at this time, an industrial or commercial zone that is not adjacent to a residential area, and preferably not in City of Marquette. If this tower proposal was adjacent to a residentially zoned neighborhood, would it even be considered? If the proposal was east of Front Street, would it even be considered? If the land use permit is granted, that opens up the possibility of future construction directly adjacent to homes in all multifamily zoned areas, as well as all residential zoned neighborhoods, because there's no difference between the two. We are residents living in multifamily units, and our interests and concerns should carry the same weight as residents living in residentially zoned neighborhoods. And the third comment is from Katie Dawson Mead at 809 West K in Marquette. I am very strongly opposed to a cell phone tower next door to my mother's home at 1007 West Bluff Street or anywhere within Marquette City limits, for that matter. Cell towers, though necessary, should be limited to commercial and industrial sites that are not adjacent to residential neighborhoods. My undergraduate work is in the health field, and I'm convinced there are serious health risks associated with cell towers. Perhaps the city cannot make a determination based on potential health risks, but people do make their decisions to live in an area based on the health and well-being of their families. This would definitely affect decisions for both potential buyers and renters, as well as those who currently reside in the neighborhood. Who wants to live next to a cell tower? Not me. My family spends a great deal of time at my mom's house, and the kids play in the side yard, which is directly adjacent to where the proposed tower would be built. Actually, the front and side yards are the only places the children can play due to the steep wooded terrain behind my mom's house, which, by the way, is currently home to various small animals and birds. Additionally, the landscaping on the proposed site is very small, narrow, and steep, and not at all conducive in meeting the requirements of a proposed cell tower. My husband and I are very seriously considering purchasing my mother's home if and when the time comes. We definitely would no longer consider doing so if a cell tower were constructed directly next door. By defect alone, you can see how the construction of a cell tower would definitely adversely affect the marketability of my mother's home, as well as the other neighborhood complexes. I'm wondering if you and your families would choose to live right next door to a cell phone tower or even on the same block. This is unacceptable, in my opinion, and this cell tower should not be allowed to be built next to my mother's home. Thank you for your time and serious attention to this matter. In closing, I'm asking that my comments be read at the City Commission meeting on Monday, April 27. And then the final comment that we've received written is from Nathan Larch at 620 Mezzaner Street. I just want to take a quick moment and thank the mayor and commissioners for their continued efforts through this COVID-19 crisis. The daily updates from Mayor Smith have been greatly appreciated to keep us all continually informed. I believe with the changing temperatures and weather, the Marquette moment will start to really take off as well, so thank you for that. As a healthcare worker myself, I appreciate all measures taken to stop the spread of this horrendous illness. Keep up the great work, everyone. Thank you, Nathan Larch. And that is all I have for written comments tonight.
Thank you, city clerk. And we've got some in the waiting room for the Zoom.
Yes, first will be Mary Dawson.
Okay, Mary Dawson will be up first, and I will be timing. Ms. Dawson, are you there? Are you able to hear us? Ms. Dawson, are you able to hear us? I don't know that she'll be able to hear me while she, if you, if you, if you can click on the microphone to enable your audio, we're not able to hear you.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Mary Dawson, 1007 West Bluff Street, Marquette, Michigan. I'm strongly opposed to the construction of a cell tower next to my home. I was extremely disappointed to learn today that the city commissioners will not be reviewing this proposal following the planning commission's decision for May 19. But despite this news, I felt compelled to state my opposition. I realize the need for coverage for our community and the importance to our daily lives. I really do. There are sites where a special land use permit for the construction of a wireless communication tower, parcel zone, general commercial maybe makes sense, but this is not one of those sites. The subject site is directly adjacent to residential property, which is my home, in a primarily residential neighborhood. The City of Marquette Land Development Code, Section 54.644A, states the goals of this order are two. One, protect residential areas and land uses from potential adverse impacts of towers. And two, encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas. What other co-location options has the entity considered? The map shows five existing towers in 1 to 1.37 miles from this location. Additionally, Verizon currently has 99.8% coverage and speed of 10 megabits per second. I don't see the need. My cell service is excellent here. The special land use checklist suggested for considering the appropriateness of the permit makes the following statement. Any potential decrease in market value of adjacent buildings, if they're proposed, special land use is approved. Note the word potential decrease. Do not say definitive decrease in market value. But after a great deal of research, I am convinced that not only would my market value decrease, but it would reduce my chances of finding a buyer willing to take on the potential security health risks and aesthetic displeasure. Additionally, I believe it would hinder me and my neighbors from looking and/or possibly retaining tenants. I contacted Marquette area realtors and a local appraiser, who agreed that the cell tower would definitely decrease my property value. A survey I researched found 79% of tenants said that under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower. I am the owner of the residential property. This is my home, and I have tenants, and I rely on that. I ask that you protect my property value and the residential character of Bluff Street. The neighborhood apartment buildings provide important missing middle housing options to the community. And after all, aren't we entitled to take into consideration as families living in residential zoned neighborhoods? Closing, I ask you, with audience, to honestly answer these two questions. Would you purchase or rent a home next to a cell tower? Would you want a cell tower to be constructed next door to your home? I encourage any supportive citizens to contact me, Mary Dawson, at MED13@starter.net or 906-226-3444. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Do we have others in the waiting room?
I have one other person who might be here for public comment.
Okay. Okay. We've got one other for public comment. We have a few in the waiting room for a public hearing when we get to that item. We're just letting this next person.
Oh, enjoy. Never mind.
Ms. Cardillo, would you like to have public comment at this time? If you, if you would need to turn on the audio on your, your media. Okay, it looks like she's not here for public comment. She's just here to answer questions if needed. Got it. I got that as a message from Dennis. Okay. Do we have any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. So item number one on our agenda, first up, we have a public hearing for conditional rezoning request for 1651 South Front Street. First, we will hear the background and then conduct the public hearing. This item does require a roll call vote. City clerk, could we please have the background?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. The city received a request to conditionally rezone the property at 1651 South Front Street, which is currently zoned mixed-use MU, to general commercial with conditional rezoning. Pursuant to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Public Act 110 of 2006, as amended, Section 125, 3405, quote, "An owner of land may voluntarily offer in writing, and the local unit of government may approve certain use and development of the land as a condition to a rezoning of the land or an amendment to a zoning map." On March 17, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and discussed the proposed rezoning. In accordance with procedures established in the Land Development Code for evaluating rezoning requests and in the administrative procedures for processing such a request, the following motion was made to recommend approval of the request. It was moved by M. Larson, seconded by M. Dunn, and carried four to one that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff file review analysis for 01-REZ-03-20, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning with conditions is consistent with the intent of the Community Master Plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54 dot 1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 01-REZ-03-20 with the following condition, that marijuana grower excess classification is struck from the list of allowable uses proposed by the applicant. Yes, M. Dunn, J. Cardillo, W. Primo, M. Larson. No, A. Andres. At their March 30, 2020, meeting, the City Commission directed that a public hearing be held for the requested conditional rezoning. Please see the attached application and staff file review slash analysis for more specific information regarding the application. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the conditional rezoning of 1651 South Front Street with the Planning Commission's recommended stipulation that the marijuana grower excess classification is struck from the list of allowable uses, alternative as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Public hearing for a conditional rezoning request for 1651 South Front Street is now open. Members of the public wishing to speak have three minutes to do so. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Do we have anyone wishing to speak for this public hearing?
Yes, we have three people currently in our waiting room.
All right, we've got three individuals. We'll let in one at a time here. Again, they'll each have three minutes. Hi, Mr. Doyle. If you, I can't hear you just yet. If you can go ahead and turn the audio on, and then you will go ahead and have three minutes to talk. In the bottom left corner, you'll have to turn the audio on. We're not able to hear you just yet. Can't hear you. We're figuring it out. Thanks for your patience, everyone. Technology. I think we've all had.
Can you hear me now?
Three minutes, Mr. Doyle. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to thank the Mayor Smith and the commissioners for entertaining our dilemma. You cannot hear me?
Yep, we're able to hear you. You've got three minutes to speak.
Okay, I just want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for entertaining this change. And if there's, I'm available for any questions you might have over this issue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Yeah.
Yes, please, just in case. We're going to put you in here in case, who else we've got for this public hearing. Okay, we've got Mr. LaRue coming in next. Mr. LaRue, are you able to hear us? Or audio, so go ahead whenever you're ready, Mr. LaRue.
My name is Pete LaRue, 282 Huron Street, Marquette. My wife and myself own the residence at 104 Furnace Street. It's a residential area, basically, houses all around this proposed change. I am trying to get. My name is Pete LaRue, 282 Huron Street, Marquette.
You're the 20-second delay. You really need to turn the TV off while you're.
Oh, turn that down or off. Shut it off. How's that?
You're, you're great. You've got about two minutes and 20 seconds left. Keep rolling.
All right. We own, we own the property at 104 Furnace Street. My daughter lives there now, born and raised there, raised her a couple of years there. And we're just concerned about a marijuana facility coming in behind in their backyard. All right, it's going to cause many problems for us. First of all, I think that the traffic will increase, even though Mr. Doyle says that traffic won't increase. Well, it will increase because marijuana draws that. If you want any facts, and I could talk to someone who has one, Colorado is a good source for information. But we just don't care. We don't want that in our backyard. It's just not. The problem is a lot of it is the traffic. Pizza Hut didn't do that well. It got out there because of the traffic, and they told several people about that. The fumes, I don't know about the fumes, and Humboldt location, you could go, you could be in a, in a parking lot, you can smell the fumes. And it was stated in the Planning Commission that there'd be violation, they shut it down. Why you don't want it there to start with? We don't need a facility, marijuana facility in that area, because they're close, and you got Market Drive above. You got Shira Hills on the other side. You got House on both sides of it. It almost looks like spots as zoning, but you know, but Mr. Dennis Stackwood said it wasn't, so I haven't read all the stuff on that. We just don't, we'd prefer not to have that there. Tell it to someone else, and someone else could come up with something. Yeah, it's, it just bothers me that they want to think about doing that. I don't know, it just, I got a lot of notes here, but I'm running out of time. But the biggest thing is that the traffic, traffic, type of business that we have, we selling marijuana, people can walk around. I can just see little Hudson Hill there, and I've talked to people up on top of Hill. They're not even aware of it. It just don't belong in that area. I guess I'll close out that. Thank you very much for your time. You have a great evening. Be safe.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got a Mr. Roy in that, and it should be the last person waiting to come in for this public hearing. Ms. Roy, go ahead. You've got three minutes.
You're there. Okay, thank you.
Were you able to hear me? You've got three minutes. Go ahead, Ms. Roy.
Okay, my name is Carrie Roy. I live at 104 East Furnace Street.
Ms. Roy, go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead and view the TV that you're watching it on, because there's a 20-second delay.
Okay, I live at 104 East Furnace Street. Basically, the piece of property that is in question for the marijuana consumption, growing, manufacturing, would be in my backyard. Both of my neighbors on each side are very opposed to it as well, and we're opposed to it for health concerns. I just don't, we basically don't want it. I'm worried about the, our health, our safety of that type of business being in our, in our backyard. I enjoy spending time in my backyard. I enjoy having my grandkids. For eight years, I was a licensed daycare provider, and I don't know if that type of business went back in our back, was basically in our backyard, would I ever be able to open a daycare again? We are surrounded both on the north. That piece of property does have two houses on the north side, as well as the residential street here. When the restaurants were in operation, we did have some issues with the smoke when it was Union Grill. It was addressed by my neighbor, and it seemed to be taken care of to some extent. We still had smoke. We just had to close our windows. But I feel as a, you know, as a resident of this area, we have the right to enjoy our yard, to have our windows open, to not have people cutting through our yard, in which we did at certain times. We've had people cutting through the back of our yard, and I just think traffic would greatly increase. I recently saw how on 420, they had over 700, I believe it was on TV6, over 700 vehicles going to the Firestone or the other marijuana shop on the highway. I'm not sure how our area is equipped to handle that type of traffic. If you have an abundance of cars headed towards, I guess it would be headed south, and you're in that turning lane, waiting to turn into a business, any type of business, I guess, like that, and if it's busy, how are vehicles coming from, maybe going to Pepsi? They have the semis, the trucks, pumps. I'm just not sure if it's the best location. I think there's many other locations that would be more suited for this type of business than in our back, in our backyard, and I feel that's just, I feel very strongly about it. We're very opposed. Both of my neighbors do have health conditions that involve breathing, and they are highly opposed, and we all did send letters in previously. And in closing, I appreciate your time. We just, we had to voice our opinions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, anyone else for the public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, I'm just going to kind of look around. Do we need to do a motion for discussion? Are we just going to move right into a motion? I think, okay, just a moment. We've got, we're working on a technical. We'll kind of get everyone unmuted here. Just a, maybe thumbs up or something, if you want to do a discussion. Discussion, yea or nay, I don't know. I don't know. I just am trying to get a consensus. However, if you want to do, I'll admit it.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Frazier, second. Any discussion on suspending the rules? Seeing none, all in favor, saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Close, signal. Motion passes seven zero to suspend the rule. Thank you. Ms. Schlegel, did you want to start us off?
Sure, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions, I think, that you might all have. You guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Joy, thanks for being here tonight to represent the Planning Commission. I'd like to start out, I guess, when, when we look at changes like this that are, that are dealing with our zoning, one of the things that we really have to pay attention to, from my experience, was how it's impacting the, our pledge, basically, and our master plan. You know, how is this, how is this type of an establishment, where it's located? I mean, with, with how our master plan has been put in place, how does, how does that fit in properly? And I wonder if you guys kind of thought about that, because you went through the process, your decision-making process there. You have any kind of insight on that?
Can I speak to that?
Please.
Sure. Sure. So I'll, I'll try to give you the narrative as I understand it. So this was done under the conditional rezoning, which is something that was recommended. Conditional rezoning is different than traditional rezoning in that conditions can be, can be put on it. The idea of a conditional zoning was something that was proposed in the Community Master Plan. And so when we did the renovation to the LDC, it was codified and added in as an actual mechanism. And the reason why it was added was for, kind of for situations like this, where you had maybe kind of a gray area in terms of not wanting to spot rezone, but when you feel like maybe it's appropriate to do a rezoning. So it sort of gave us this other mechanism. As far as this actual site, my understanding was that the reason, it had traditionally been a commercial site. You know, it's, the traditional uses have been commercial for its entire, for a very long time, as far as what I know. And the reason that in the future land use plan, that it was changed to mixed use was because that was sort of the, the catch-all that we used to sort of take these. take these commercial properties that were buffering up against residential properties. But in actuality, its historic use has always been something that fits more into a general commercial. So it was one of these properties that sort of was a bit tricky and fell in that way. So when we were able, so we felt that the, using this conditional rezoning mechanism was an appropriate way to be able to give the property kind of the traditional uses that it had sort of had access to up until this point, because it really is, has always been a commercial site. In addition to that, you know, we felt like the adjacency to the general commercial district across the street, you know, I think somebody pointed out, it's maybe something like 90 feet, also reinforced that that was somewhat appropriate. I think, you know, we talked through the different, we talked through each of the different marijuana typologies, I guess, and you know, we felt like, based on, given the fact that you have to have these odor control mechanisms in your mechanical systems, and we are really relying on those to work, and, and this, this sort of smell test, you, you cannot smell it with your nose, or you are in violation. You know, we wanted to give this property owner the ability to use their property to the fullest extent possible. And, and he came to us with the conditions, which was basically keeping it as a mixed use while adding in the marijuana component of general commercial. Does that explain it?
I think it doesn't really explain the conditional zoning term, and, and you know, it's relatively new.
It is new. It's the first time we've done it.
Right. And, and I guess the big thing for me, you know, immediately, people, they think of a particular parcel like this being addressed, they automatically go to spot zoning. Because it's a real easy term to associate with. But, and it's, I think it would be very difficult to understand why it is not part of the, the spot zoning issue, so that we can get that.
So are you cutting it? You want me to explain why it's not spot zoning?
Dennis, for yourself, either way.
My thing is that because it's conditional zoning, and because the, and Dennis, you can feel free to clarify this if I'm not explaining it correctly. But because they're coming to us with conditions, and it's not just being lumped in entirely with the new spot zoning, it sort of becomes its own piece.
That's good, Joy. I can add to that as well. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Spot zoning doesn't apply with a conditional rezoning, because the parcel stands on its own merit, and it's based upon, it's judged upon the, the conditions that the applicant brings forward. So in other words, it's a, it's kind of a give and take by the applicant, saying, maybe this doesn't necessarily fit normally, but I'm going to offer you this, and, and I'm either going to do certain things or not do certain things. And the way that the statute was written by the legislature is, it says, you, you, once a person offers you these things, that spot zoning isn't applicable, because now they're in a situation of trying to make the, the parcel better and the offer better for the community to address a lot of the concerns that you would have with something in a, in a rare circumstance where it wouldn't necessarily fit in traditional zoning. But it's really driven by the state statute, and once, once it becomes a conditional rezoning, it, it becomes almost like a planned unit development, where it's judged on its own merit of what, what's brought forth by the applicant.
That's, that's the one that I likened it most to, the PUDs of, of past. So, okay. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Questions?
Is that me? We can't hear you, Jenna.
You didn't able to hear me? I unmuted myself.
Thanks. So to be clear, because we had a lot of documentation on this, what are the conditions that the applicant is bringing forward that are, were deemed acceptable? Those could just please be explained.
Do you want me to answer that, Dennis, or?
Go ahead, Joy.
Okay, if I miss anything, but basically, all we did was add in the marijuana uses as special land use. Everything else pretty, in terms of the, the uses at least, are the same as mixed use. So he actually Xed out, he went through, and Xed out, and said, I don't need any of these uses that aren't, in general commercial, that aren't in mixed use, other than the marijuana. And then we, the board took off excess marijuana grower, which he had requested, but we denied that one piece of it.
I'd, I'd like to add to that as well, because I'm, I'm looking at the report right here. So if, the property as it stands now is zoned mixed use, which allows, allows A through Z type of uses. And the applicant brought it forward and said, I would like to do general commercial, but the conditions that I'm going to self-impose are, I'm, I don't want to do all of the things in general commercial, I only want to do the things that I'm permitted to do business-wise in mixed use, if you in turn allow me to add the medical, or the recreational marijuana uses to it.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Are you guys able to hear me now?
Yep.
Not real well, huh?
We can hear you a little bit, Jen.
Your volume, your volume is low. We can hear you, but your volume is considerably lower than everyone else.
We're trying to figure that out. Stay tuned.
All right. Sorry, guys. Are you able to hear me now?
Okay, we got you.
Sorry for the delay. Okay, so anyone, any other commissioners have any comments or questions for this discussion? Commissioner Banzel?
Yeah, I just had a, thank you. I just had a question for Commissioner Cardio. I was just curious, reading through the minutes of the planning commission meeting, especially early on in the discussion, there were some concerns expressed by other commissioners, I think you were one of them actually, about consumption, designated consumption facilities being allowed at the site. And I suppose I kind of understand some of those concerns, but what I didn't understand was why the decision was ultimately made to allow them. So if you could maybe go into a little more detail about that, because it wasn't quite clear from the minutes about how that decision was reached.
Yeah, I mean, I, it was debatable for certain. I think that the argument was made that this was traditionally a restaurant, or, you know, and a, kind of even a venue use at a certain point. And for those reasons, having it be a consumption establishment was not out of the realm of possibility, although so they thought for that reason, it was thought that it wasn't inappropriate.
Okay, thank you. Matt Amer, if I could make one other, ask one other question? Sure. I suppose this is more for either Dennis or perhaps Sean, who knows a lot about this sort of thing. But I know that there, there's been, there have been concerns raised about the fact, you know, Marquette, we have this recreational, this adult-use marijuana ordinance. We don't have a medical marijuana ordinance. And my understanding was that if you do not have, according to state statute, if you do not possess a medical marijuana ordinance, or medical marijuana license, rather, which you need to be in a community that has such an ordinance to get one, that you need that as a prerequisite in order to establish an adult-use medical marijuana business to get a permit. So if you maybe go into a little more detail about that, because it seems like maybe we are potentially creating some obstacles for entrepreneurs who might want to create a business at this site or other eligible sites in the city.
Hey, Dennis, I can take this one.
Okay.
Yeah. So you do have to have a, you have to be licensed underneath the medical marijuana program to attain a number of the recreational licenses. It does not have to be within the same municipality or location. For instance, if you look at the Firehouse, they are a medically licensed facility and a recreational licensed facility in Nagani, but they're planning on opening up a recreational facility in Marquette. Because that business has a medical license elsewhere, they'll be eligible to open up a recreational business in Marquette. Also, this, so that was a requirement put on by the act passed by the voters, that they be also licensed with the MMFLA first. The state can choose to end that requirement in November. If they don't end it in November, it will end in the following November, so two years after the first licenses issued. So that is a requirement that they are licensed underneath that program, but it doesn't have to be in the same place, and the state has an option to end it early. And it will end on its own in November 2021.
Okay, thanks. The, the answer is my question. I, I would just offer that it might be something we consider as a commission to pass a medical marijuana ordinance. Because it seems like, to me at least, it seems that that's creating a barrier that's sort of unfair to new entrepreneurs who want to start a new business, who don't have a pre-existing business, and therefore don't have a license in another community. Of course, that's not our topic today, but as long as we're talking about this, figured I would just throw it out there, because it does seem relevant to this discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Banzel. Commissioner Fraser, any comments? I think you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, sure. Like, I grew up up the street from that, up on the top of the hill, where there's Pizza Hut back in the day, I walked down there many times, enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. Union Grill was a great restaurant, but I know that a lot of people commented, they had restaurants, about the, the driving, you know, to turn out something, but turn in is always difficult with people coming down to ourselves, speed limit being raised, you know. I'm sure, you know, we're looking at possible problems, like the people, the public government said about traffic. There was a lot of traffic one day. The police got a problem with, you know, traffic or accidents or whatever. The thing is, you know, like, people said, there are houses on the other side of it. I know that, I know the house up the hill too. I grew up on the hill. I have friends in the neighborhood, so up the hill, I don't know how many kids are left up there, but I do know that there's a lot of kids over on, you know, either side of it. The kids over in Sherris Hills, our friend was daycare in Sherris Hills. The thing is, you know, we first started the stuff, the state said, we can't have anything near, you know, like the women's center or something like that, which is not really near it. It's in the vicinity, but it's probably a quarter mile, half mile away, but still, there's something, you know, to think about. It's near the women's center. I'm sure they would not be happy about, you know, with all the problems that people have. It's very trying to grow out there. I would think there's one thing for the, you know, a recreational, it's a sell shop, but having a growing facility, I can see, you know, could have problems there with, you know, different areas, stuff like that. I can see it being a problem. I mean, I would say, grow it where, you know, grow it somewhere out where you can have room to grow it, and then sell it wherever you can sell it, but I would think, you know, maybe there's a better place to do it, I would think, so. That's all for me.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, you're going back to the planning, the commission meeting, or the minutes that we were reviewing for this application. And the application is really addressing the marijuana, yet in the, in the minutes, it talked about how they don't expect this to be a marijuana facility, and it most likely will revert to a restaurant. So if, I don't know if this is for Joy, or if it's for Mr. Doyle, if we could just be really clear what the intent is and what the plans are for this particular piece of property.
Um, well, I think, as, as it was presented to us at the meeting, it was, which was, I guess, in March. It seemed like everything was up in the air, as many, many things right now are up in the air. So we don't actually know, and in general, we try to sort of do these based on the range of possibilities, knowing that business plans fall through and, and plans fall through. So I, I believe that it was, he had talked about two different deals that he had had going, and one of them fell through. I'm not even sure which one, honestly. One was a grow operation, and I think one might have been retail. But honestly, we tried to just evaluate it on the merits of, would any of these be appropriate? Because knowing that, you know, once this is done, we don't have control over what happens there.
That's a good question, Commissioner Davis. Why don't we go ahead and bring in Mr. Terry Doyle, and see if he might be able to answer that question? We've got him in the waiting room. Hi, Mr. Doyle. Were you able to hear that question?
Yeah, I was.
If you want to go ahead and just let us know what, what the plans are at this point.
You know, as of last week, the sale had already been reenacted. So it was for a marijuana facility. And it's, it's, it's a good price to sell the business for, and that they're going to put a lot of money into it, which will do a lot of good for that area. We bought Union Grill, we bought it from Pizza Hut, because it was a blighted property. We felt that the market did not deserve a blighted property as you came into the south end of town. So we bought the property, we worked 10 years at Union Grill, we had it running well, and I'm going to show you a picture of the parking lot then, at Union Grill. I don't know if you can see this.
Not real well, but we can kind of see it.
Yeah. It was packed, you know, and so the people saying, you know, the two houses north of us that are saying, you know, we don't want the traffic, and on and on, and, and there's issues with, you know, traffic patterns and stuff like that. We had that place packed many, many days, and we used to have wine tasters, and people would park across the street. So that is really not one of the issues that should be addressed here. But as of last week, the deal was back on, and it's, it's quite an impressive development that these people are planning on. But we don't want to.
I have a follow-up question?
Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
In the things that were eliminated for the general commercial district, I was, I was surprised when two of them were eliminated. One is the bar, and one is the drive-through. Could you help me, help us understand why those two were eliminated?
You can't just have a bar in, in a mixed-use situation. You could have a restaurant with alcohol, but you cannot just run a bar. So that's.
Maybe Dennis needs to clarify this, because as I look at the mixed use, the bar is allowed. And then in the application, you have eliminated the bar. I, maybe it doesn't make any difference to votes, but I was just curious.
Yeah. Well, when I looked at the cross demographics of what you can use a mixed use and what you can't, bar was listed in, and, and an add-on. And we didn't think that we needed to add that on. So we struck that off.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Dennis, do you have anything to add that might help us out there?
No, it's, it's as Mr. Doyle had stated, the, the bar would have been permitted, but he's volunteering to. And, and again, this is based upon the premise, if it wasn't going to be, say he's, and I'm not saying he's going to do it, but if some, you've heard the term bait and switch, he could an applicant could stand in front of you and say, yeah, I'm going to do this marijuana facility, and you approved the rezoning. He can do anything on that list. Well, a bar wouldn't be one of them, because it's been kicked off. And we know nothing like that has ever happened before, right?
Just, because Commissioner Davis, this is something that actually we, we discussed in our, in our minutes, because I, I kind of caught the same thing as well. And we thought about bringing it up, but we didn't, because one of the facets of the conditional rezoning is that it can't be a back and forth. It can't, like, we can't sort of counter and say, well, you took out bar, why did you do that? Can we put that back? Do you want to put that back in? For it to really qualify as conditional zoning, the, the owner, Mr. Doyle. For it to really qualify as conditional rezoning, um, the, the, the owner, Mr. Doyle, had to come to us with his requirements and we had to say yes or no. We could add, uh, additional conditions as we did by taking out the excess, but it wasn't, the intention is not that it should be a back and forth. Uh, and so, you know, we, we did address it, um, but that's just sort of where it landed based on the application he gave us.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering about the rationale. So we're good.
Thank you. Other commissioners with any comments or questions, discussion points? Mr. Davis?
I, I would guess I have one more. Um, Mr. Doyle just talked about the plans for, um, building renovations or the demolishing of the building. And I guess, like, one of my questions perhaps to you, Dennis, is that, um, is, will there be a requirement for the building to be demolished and, and something new built? Or is it just, uh, maybe?
That's, that's not a, uh, that's a very good question. That's not a requirement that, uh, the city itself can place upon a private landowner as part of any approval. Um, looking at, you know, the type of facility that's looking at, that he is talking about going in there, it's most likely it would have to, um, be demolished. But under both scenarios, whether the building stays or if it's demolished and a new one is built, it will be required to go undergo a site plan review with the planning commission, which is where they will, the proprietor, if it's sold, uh, will have to come in with a plan for the building to include the traffic and parking and, um, where the dumpsters and how they're going to handle trash and all of that stuff is going to be wrapped in that the planning commission will have a swing at, um, before that development, we're able to go live.
Thank you. Does that make sense? We are, we are all understanding that? I think we're nodding in agreement. Any other comments or questions before we, uh, go for a vote here? Not seeing any. I'm trying to be more careful about that as I had a hard time with that last meeting. Okay, so commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Mayor Protem Hill?
I move that, uh, the commission approve the conditional rezoning of sixteen fifty-one South Front Street with the planning commission's recommended stipulation that the marijuana grower excess classification is struck from the list of allowable uses.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We don't have a second. Uh, I have a, Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Protem Hill, any comments?
We've discussed it.
Yeah, we have. Commissioner Bonzel, anything to add?
Yeah, um, actually, I, I was curious, Madam Mayor, if it would be in order for me to offer an amendment at this time, or do we want to wait until the other commissioners have had an opportunity to comment?
I am open to either, uh, either scenario.
I should go for it now, Evan.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Uh, so I move that the marijuana designated consumption establishment classification also be struck from the list of allowable uses proposed by the applicant.
Let me go back to my list here and then I'm going to ask you to repeat that, Commissioner Bonzel. All right, go ahead and repeat that for me, please.
Sure. So I move that the marijuana designated consumption establishment classification also be struck from the list of allowable uses proposed by the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a second for that motion?
Oh, second.
Commissioner Frazier? And I guess it's just safe for the amendment, not for the motion. Um, so we've got Bonzel, I've got Frazier, and Commissioner Bonzel, would you like to, um, discuss this amendment, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I just, after hearing some of the public comments that were made earlier, as well as you receiving some written communications from constituents who live in the neighborhood who were concerned, um, you know, I, I, and also reading the minutes of the planning commission meeting, in which several planning commissioners expressed concern about some of the potential negative impacts a consumption establishment might have. You know, one, one planning commissioner stated that he was going to vote no, uh, on the rezoning, uh, request because consumption establishments were still included. Um, and after considering things, I think especially given some of the concerns we heard, some of the respiratory health issues suffered by some of the adjacent residents, I can understand why, even with the air filtration systems that are required by the code, the neighbors might not want people actually consuming or smoking marijuana on the property. Um, and for that reason, I was offering this amendment just because I, I think it might be a prudent idea and I wanted to see what my fellow commissioners thought about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, any, uh, comments or discussion?
I agree with Evan. It's good to rezonate for whatever we can use it for, but I agree with getting rid of the marijuana part of it. And I agree with Evan, you know, it could be people hanging out there. I mean, people smoke outside hospital, restaurants all the time. And I know I've seen the hospital, the old hospital, the sign says no smoking here, people smoke right by it. So I can see people outside, you know, it's illegal now, you can do it. Who wants to do it? That's up to you, but I can see people outside doing it and maybe causing problems in the neighborhood and stuff like that. So I could see, I agree. Thank you, Evan. Good, yeah.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Uh, could maybe, um, the director, uh, walk us through what the marijuana designated consumption establishment land use entails?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, I don't, I might apologize for this, but I don't have the conditional use standards in front of me.
Or maybe Sean hasn't memorized.
Um, um, as we're speaking, I'm, I'm looking through my files and ordinances right now and I'm looking through the staff report.
Sure, while you do that, uh, Dennis, I do have a question for Mr. Doyle. I just wanted to ask him if this would, um, change the saleability of his property with what he's got on the line here.
Well, we'd like to keep all options open, of course. Um, I believe the outfit, um, that is looking at it does not entertain consumption on the premises. Now, uh, marijuana designated consumption establishment means a commercial space that is licensed and where it is authorized for adults twenty-one years of age and older to consume marijuana products. Now, that would be inside the facility where the air is contained. Um, these people are, are big players. I'm sure they're not going to entertain a bunch of monkey business. Nobody's going to be outside in the parking lot smoking weed. Um, I'll tell you, um, the big thing is Gumby's now. And, um, um, I, I don't think that's an issue at all. Um, I, I don't think that we have to eliminate that. Um, I'm sure they can handle this, this situation properly.
Okay, so it sounds like the, the sale of the property would not necessarily be dependent on whether or not this piece was included.
Well, maybe, maybe if this guy passes on us and we've got three people looking at the property.
Thank you. It, it helps clarify. That's not necessarily why I'm voting, but I just wanted to get that from you. And I think if we go back to Mr. Stackowitz, maybe he, he might be ready for us now, but it sounds like, um, Mr. Doyle had some good info there as well. I think he's waiting for Sean to unmute him.
Yeah, he, no, uh, Mr. Doyle basically quoted the definition from the ordinance, so, you know, that's what it is, twenty-one or older, and it's where you can consume, uh, marijuana. As far as the standards, the distances from other properties and things like that, that would go through the special land use approval. And those are what I'm, I'm on the web looking for those right now and, uh, to serve at your pleasure. If you want them, I'll continue looking.
Commissioners, what, what do, and I think Mayor Protem Hill, you had asked that question. Do you have any other specific questions related to that?
Um, well, the question of being able to consume outside, although, you know, now in the time of social distancing too, like, you know, where these things are all changing around, but it seems, um, there's no, yeah, I found it on the LARA website as well, the, um, it doesn't say anything about indoor, outdoor, or, um, uh, it, it, um, I, I guess my primary concern would be going beyond what the planning commission agreed to and, um, certainly the neighborhood is very concerned about what's going to be happening around the property and on the property and what would be coming off of the property. Um, it's a tough, it's a, it's a tough call, um, but I do feel like I have enough information on what the law says.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioners, questions or comments? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote on the amendment. So this amendment is to strike the marijuana designated consumption establishment from the list of uses. Um, all in favor of this amendment, signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, we need to do a roll call on this? I'm going to ask the attorney. He's nodding. Okay, City Clerk, if you could please-
I think so, to make it clear.
On the amendment.
Okay, um, so Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Uh, um, yeah, I'll say no.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. So we have six to one, correct, City Clerk?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so back to the original motion now with the amendment. City Clerk, could I please have you read that back to us now with the amendment?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I'm kind of editing for brevity here, but, uh, the motion would be to approve the conditional rezoning of sixteen fifty-one South Front Street, uh, with the stipulation that the marijuana grower excess classification and the designated consumption establishment classifications are both struck from the list of allowable uses.
Thank you. And we have a motion and a second on the floor already. Do we have additional discussion on this before we go to a vote? Seeing, oh, okay, Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, I would just add that, um, you know, just first of all, thanking everybody that provided public comment or that communicated with us. You know, you all were heard. I heard from people in the neighborhood who were in favor of it and people who were against it. Um, but ultimately, I think what the important thing to recognize is that our code, as, as Ms. Cardio noted in the planning commission meeting, requires, uh, marijuana, all marijuana facilities to have very advanced air circulation filtration systems that prevent any detectable odor from escaping the building. So if there's any issue with, with odor or contaminants in the air that you can smell with your nose outside the building, that's a violation according to our code. And so if anybody in the neighborhood detects any such violations, they should report them to the city and, you know, well, I'm sure we'll get our code enforcement people right on it. Um, but I think this is the right call. Um, and, and I think that it's what's fair to the property owner. And I think that we made a good effort to try and compromise and address some of the concerns of people in the neighborhood as well.
I would agree. Thank you, Commissioner Bonzel. Do we have other comments or questions? Commissioner Frazier?
Hey Kyle, is this basically, we're approving the rezoning of it, just eliminate any kind of marijuana stuff in it or what?
Uh, no, so there's a list of, there's a list of allowable uses. Uh, I'm sure Dennis or Joy could detail a more, that are going to be included. Um, two of them that are removed are the designated consumption establishment and the excess grower use, but there are still several other marijuana uses that are going to be included.
Okay. Thanks, Kyle.
Looks like, uh, we've got Dennis and Mayor Protem Hill. Go ahead, Dennis, first, just to clarify, maybe.
Real quick, I did find, I looked up the standards for special land use, um, all consumption, uh, the standards are written for all consumption to be indoors.
All consumption indoors. Okay.
With ventilation and so on, like everything else.
But we've, at this point, our amendment has taken that off the table, so, um, thank you though for looking that up. Um, Mayor Protem Hill, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Director. That was very helpful. I, I guess I, it comes down to me to the principle of, and this has been a concern all along with these marijuana questions of the commission getting involved in what businesses, um, are viable and what they look like. Um, when the community voted to make, um, these establishments legal, and then zoning is where we get into the fine grain of things, of what happens where. Um, and I guess, fun of, I certainly hear the concerns of the residents. I hear they're, they're very concerned that there's going to be, um, a, a difference in, there's going to be appreciable change in, uh, what kind of people are going to be around where they live every day. Um, and, uh, I, I, I hear that. Um, but it is traditionally a commercial area. Um, I have been here a lot. I remember the Union Grill being packed myself and certainly the barbecue smell was present. So I appreciate they've, um, been living in a location that's had a lot of commercial activity. And, um, and I think, um, there's definitely going to be more regulated now than it was when it was a restaurant.
All right. Looking for any hands for any discussion? I'm thinking we've kind of talked this one out. I'm just making sure here. Zoom is a little slower than real life. Making sure. Okay. All right, so hearing no further discussion, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
No.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes five to two. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I would motion to, uh, accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say yes.
Your Honor, that, that was going to be a roll call.
Where does it have a roll call vote?
We have, we have a, uh, two F's are roll call vote in that consent agenda. Might as well do them.
All right, City Clerk, can we please have a roll call vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Yeah. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to new business, item number three, Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive and Union Street Reconstruction Projects. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you. Plans have been developed for the package reconstruction project of Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive and Union Street in accordance with prior planning commission and city commission approval, master plan and capital improvement plan requirements. Uh, the work will consist of water main replacement and service work, sanitary sewer main replacement extension, replacement of sanitary sewer laterals, storm sewer main replacement extension, sidewalk replacement extension, curbing addition and replacement, reconstruction of the street structure and the associated appurtenances per the plan limits. Plan limits are as follows. Marquette Drive from US forty-one to North End cul-de-sac, Lakeview Drive from Marquette Drive to the South End cul-de-sac and Union Street from Wilkinson Avenue to the, to Prescott Isle Avenue. Bids for the project were opened on April sixteenth, twenty twenty. Five contractors responded to our requests for bids and the results are summarized below. The estimate, uh, was one million eight hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Ailen Bergen Sons bid as checked was one million five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and five cents. Oberstar's bid as checked was one million six hundred and seven thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and five cents. Associated Constructors LLC, one million six hundred and thirty dollars, six hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Hebert Construction Company, one million seven hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents. And Smith Construction at one million eight hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, tabulation and checking of these bids found errors on some of them. Errors were mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. The fiscal effect, Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive and Union Street Reconstruction Projects were approved under the fiscal year twenty twenty budget. These projects will be part of the fiscal year twenty twenty bond package. Recommendation, approve a contract for the package reconstruction project of Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive and Union Street to Ailen Bergen Sons Incorporated in the amount of one million five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and five cents based on the quantities and unit prices bid and allow the city manager to use a ten percent contingency for any unknown circumstances and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Uh, alternative as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I'll have to do it.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve a contract for the package reconstruction project of Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive, and Union Street to Alen Bergen Sons, Inc. in the amount of $1,522,680.05 based on the quantities and unit prices bid, and allow the city manager to use a 10% contingency for any unknown circumstances, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Frazier?
I'll second it.
Perfect. Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Very little discussion, other than say it's work we agreed to, it needs to be done, and it certainly helps move the city forward.
Great. Commissioner Frazier, anything?
I grew up in there, like I said before, I think it's a good thing for the town to be out, for the residents to be done. I just wonder why it took so long to be done.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you.
I agree with Commissioners.
Stonehouse and Frazier, that this work needs to be done. I'm completely in favor of it. You know, road maintenance is clearly an increased expense for us. And of course, with all, many of the questions we're facing about future infrastructure repairs and development and future development of the city, I just want to take this opportunity to reiterate that I think that it would be prudent for the city sometime in the next year to engage in a value per acre analysis of the city of Marquette to determine which parts of the city, what kinds of development are most financially productive and most capable of supporting their own long-term infrastructure needs. I think it would help when we're making decisions like this and also help us better plan for the future to minimize infrastructure costs. And also maximize our, the growth of our tax base. I think I talked about this with Mr. Simpson, our CFO, shortly after I was elected. And I'd be happy to talk with my fellow commissioners and with city staff about it further. But I think it's an idea that we should explore that is sort of highlighted by, by this decision that we're making tonight.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state name and physical address. Do we have anyone this evening? Mr. Terry Doyle, do you have any additional comments? I'm not seeing him. Oh, we'd have to add him back in. Sure, let's go ahead and see if he has any additional. And who was the other? Okay, yep, we'll go ahead and one at a time let him in. Mr. Doyle, did you have any additional comments this evening for public comment?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Jenna.
Yep, no problem. And then we've got Ms. Roy. Ms. Roy, did you have any additional public comments this evening? Ms. Roy, are you able to hear me? I'm thinking she's not here for a public comment. Okay, thanks. No one else for public comment? Public comment is now closed. Brings us two comments from the commission. And I know Commissioner Davis is new. I do vary up the order every time, just as a heads up to her. So I just change it up every meeting. We start out with Commissioner Stonehouse this meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good meeting, good discussion meeting. I'm glad we got a few things done that needed to be done. I would ask, ask the manager during his time if he could talk to us or explain to the public why the Verizon Tower issue will go to the planning commission but will not go to city commission for action. I think people would like to know that, and this would be a good opportunity to get the word out on it. I would encourage everybody to continue to be safe, continue to follow the directions as necessary for the COVID virus 19. We got to beat it down. The sooner we can beat it down, the sooner the governor will let us out of jail. So that's, that's a good way to look at it. And perhaps even more important, the quicker we can, we can beat it down and get to the point we have to, we can get the economy moving again. And getting our economy moving is critically important. And you might argue that it's intertwined directly with the requirement to be safe. Those two are mutually supporting. So everybody practice good social interview, interval, please, and do the things that are necessary to keep you safe and others too. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you. Um, I want to note that our, as you, the bill that you got for your utilities, water and trash, do not have the correct dates for when brush is going to be picked up, but the date that the composting site will open is May 2nd. That has not changed. But to please double check the marquettemi.gov website to see when the brush is going to come by. I know everybody in my neighborhood was working on their yards this weekend because of the nice weather. So please double check. It's going to be a couple of weeks delayed because of the snow, the late snow that we had and the, um, some of the staffing that we've had to do around coronavirus. And, and then speaking of coronavirus, I just want to thank everyone who's out there on the front lines. Want to thank the amazing groups of people who've come together to make masks and face shields and provide the other equipment, doing the donations, raising the food for frontline workers. Our community has been adapting and coming together in really remarkable ways. And I, from the depth of my heart, thank you to everyone who's working so hard. And we are going to have to start thinking about how different things are going to be in the future. Unfortunately, we are going to have new realities. I know I went into a store for the first time over the weekend because there were some things I couldn't order online. I had to go in and get them. And everyone had a mask on, and it's, it's different. And we're gonna, we're gonna be in a new world where we're going to be wearing masks all the time for, for certainly, oh, short term, medium term. And so we're all going to be learning together. And I'm, I'm sure we'll be able to, we're going to have a lot of talking and figuring things out. And I really, again, welcome conversations about that, ideas that people have as we work our way through this.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
No comments really. I think everybody's doing good. Hope everybody's being safe. Season's doing a good job taking care of everybody. Hospital reported, they're kind of going down in numbers now. And I agree that it's good for Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive getting done. Like I said, I grew up there. There's no curbs, no drain, nothing. The water just drains into the woods and just go wherever it goes. Like it's good for getting updated.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you. To remind city residents again that, you know, because of the delay with COVID-19 and the recent snowstorm, we did have a delay with spring rubbish collection, but that is starting. Household rubbish drop-off site and the compost site will be opening very soon. The compost site will be accepting compostable waste drop-offs starting on May 2nd. And actually, as of today, the household rubbish drop-off site is accepting household rubbish on Mondays and Wednesdays from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then the curbside brush pickup will take place May 18th through the 22nd. And curbside leaf pickup will follow on May 26th through June 5th. Just want to thank everybody for understanding the delay due to the weather and circumstances. And also want to reiterate Mayor Protem Hill's comments, thanking all of our frontline workers, city staff, many dedicated volunteers in the community as well, who are helping us all get through this crisis right now. And finally, I also just want to remind everyone that the bike path and city boat launches are open for public use, as well as the front loop on Prescott Isle, although that is only open to vehicles. But all the other city parks and public restrooms remain closed to the public due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I know that many people would like us to reopen the city parks, and believe me, none of us want them to be closed. I would love to be able to go for a walk around the island or go down the street and play tennis at Williams Park. But right now, the only responsible choice we have is to keep them closed. You know, public restrooms would be a major vector for the spread of any virus, especially one that can survive on surfaces for days. And the CDC has also warned all Americans not to use playgrounds, play team sports, gather with others outside their household in parks or visit crowded parks. And unfortunately, given that public health guidance, I don't feel that we can responsibly open city parks anytime in the next couple of weeks, at least until that guidance changes. So I just want to remind everyone that we're all very lucky to live in this country where we have the best public health agency in the world. So let's all listen to them, stick together, and remember that ultimately, we're all responsible not only for our own safety, but for the safety of our neighbors as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to go back to the zoning issue just for a real brief moment and, and address some of the traffic. And I'm hoping that in the future, our city can take a look at the traffic that is there in that area, not only for the highway, although we all know it's a busy highway, but the increase in potential for, for foot traffic. And where there's going to be a greater density in that area, particularly with the hotel and some of the townhouses going up. And there's a great potential for more foot traffic to that place. And there is no sidewalk, no bike path access. And I would suspect that there are going to be people using those little tiny streets or alleys that are not currently being used very much. So just something to think about in the future. And then if I could just kind of piggyback on Mayor Protem Hill and Commissioner Bonzal about the emerging leaders that we are finding in our community, they're kind of unintentional leaders. They just didn't set out to become leaders, but they saw a need and they stepped forward. And I just want to actually recognize them. Sally Steen with Masks for Marquette has just totally built an army of, of people that have, you know, kind of dusted off their sewing machine. And, and they've had like 15,000 masks have been provided to the frontline workers. And not only, what, not in that count is all of the masks that they have been sewing for their friends and family. So we really don't know how many masks, but there are a lot. You know, Marquette High School teacher Becky LeBrecq, who asked the school if she could take home the 3D printers and just almost ran 3D printers 24/7. And, and then managed to build a network across the UP. And they have over 4,000 face shields that have been provided to our frontline workers. And it's amazing. It's very much needed. And then there's Rachel Banner Hunter, who has started a group to feed the front lines. And that is done through donations where the local restaurants are being supported with gift cards or, or purchases so that they can thank the front lines and just kind of reduce their stress a little bit as they deal with this. And those are, I just, you know, thank you for those three, for leading those efforts. And it's really meant a lot to our community.
Great. Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to jump right on top of that same topic, Sally. Thank you. And welcome, Sally, to the commission. We look forward to working with you. Congratulations on your appointment. The, the, the three people that you just mentioned, you know, they've got an army of workers underneath them as well that are doing wonderful things. I know that, as a matter of fact, I noticed today on Facebook that because of some grants and things that have been obtained and some donations that have been obtained, that Bathwell, I believe, got two new 3D printers, brand new, out of the box today. And it's just, I mean, you know, this is just, this is just great stuff. So thank you for bringing those people up. I want to point out the, the fact that we've kind of transitioned, I'm going to call this spring, even though it doesn't feel real springy until this next weekend. I, I'm not quite sure what happened. Maybe we just got lucky with the way that things melted off. But I do know that our, our city workers, with the amount of times that they're being cut back right now, have done a really fabulous job of transitioning us into spring with the roads, pothole filling, keeping up on that. Last year, you look back and, and it was just nothing but thunder and brims coming out of my computer with people about potholes, you know, and how terrible we were and, and everything else that was, that, that they could think of in a negative way. But this, this, for whatever reason, I know that they're working hard with the time that they have, but I just want to say thank you to all of our, our city workers that are working so hard, frontliners, God bless you. I know that, you know, there's, there's a lot of people out there that are doing their, their part in different ways, whether you're in the, in the hospital, as a caregiver, in the grocery stores, everywhere, across the board. I'm just so proud of our community and, and the rest of the UP here as well. I mean, all of these little groups that have been established here have spawned off and done things in, in munising, in Iron Mountain, in the Sioux. And we're all just taking care of our neighbors. And I just, I'm just really excited about being able to toot our horn as, as we can do that as often as we can. So with that, I think that's pretty much it for me. But take care of yourselves and please, you know, wear your masks, abide by the parks and the rules that are, that are there. I know I want to get out there too, but Prescott Isle is just for drive and hate to, hate to bring it up. But, you know, we're so close to seeing things really flatten out and hopefully head in the other direction. Great news from CEO from the hospital today in regards to cases and people going home that were ill. I really appreciate Gar and his team's effort over there of keeping us informed. And I just can't say, you know, how proud I am to be part of this community. So have a great night.
Thanks. I think most of the topics were already covered. I did want to mention that we do have some committees performing meetings on Zoom, like we are, such as the planning commission. So the important work of the city is still happening, even though, you know, city hall is closed and we're not able to have in-person meetings. It's not just the city commission that's meeting. We've got other things happening, which I think is, is evident, as, as the planning commission was pretty involved in our meeting tonight with their decision leading up to our vote. Wanted to say thank you to city staff, especially to city manager, police department, fire department, public works, and all those folks that are still out and working to get things done and make sure that our city is continuing to run. All the donations and, and public efforts, we already mentioned, the masks, face shields, feed the front lines. But I did want to mention that those three specifically all have donation pages on Facebook and I believe on GoFundMe. And I do have links to those on my Facebook page. If, if you have a little extra money, maybe donate to help people buy fabric or feed the front lines or provide the plastic for those cool 3D printers. One additional is food pantries in our area. I have been speaking with some folks trying to get a centralized food bank. In the UP, there is not one. It's out of Muskegon, apparently. So we have food pantries up here. But if, if anyone has, you know, extra money or gets that stimulus check and doesn't have a need for the whole thing, maybe just think about donating a little bit to the, the virtual Can-a-thon on TV6 or, you know, Salvation Army, the St. Vinnie's. Or if you're not sure, you can call 211 and get more information about the food pantries in our area. I know food insecurity is an issue that, you know, I'm worried about for our community moving forward. This is something that's going to go on for a while. That is all that I had for this evening. Stay safe, folks, follow guidelines. And we're all, we're all in this together and we'll get through it. But it's going to be a long journey ahead. I think we're, we're in for a ride here. But city manager, do you have any comments this evening? I hand my laptop over to him.
Six feet away.
Six feet. Everything was covered, but I will ask Dennis to respond to the tower question. He's the most qualified to do so. Other than that, I'm done. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. The planning commission is the deciding body on the tower issue because that is a special land use. What we formerly used to call a conditional, conditional use permit, that's an administrative approval of the planning commission per state statute. And it has been that way since, well, the 1978 zoning ordinance, I can remember. I can't think of any special land use cases that have come before the, the city commission. That's purely in the, in the wheelhouse of the planning commission. Now, as far as the procedure, the planning commission reviews the packet from the applicant. Then they check the box to see that all the standards are met. The planning commission had some additional questions about the standards from Verizon. Verizon and the planning commission tabled that matter until May 19. At that time, they hope to have the answers from Verizon to be able to render a decision in that case. No matter what the decision is, in that case, both parties, which would either be the residents, that would be what we would call an aggrieved party, or the applicant, if they felt that the decision was unfavorable on their terms.
was unfavorable on their terms, either one of those parties would have a direct appeal to the Marquette City Board of Zoning Appeals. And there, that's kind of like the zoning court for, for these administrative, non-legislative type of actions. The Board of Zoning Appeals could then hear the case and render a decision on that. If after that decision by the Board of Zoning Appeals, then the final recourse becomes the, the court system. But again, it's based upon state statute, and it's been that way for a very long time.
Thank you for taking the time to explain. I think that does help us understand and, and gives those folks that commented tonight some direction with, you know, tuning into that next planning commission meeting, which I believe will be on May 18th, is that correct?
The 19th.
May 19th. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, I think city manager didn't have any further comments. So we are now adjourned at 7:28 p.m.